They call a meeting there, and please stand. Rest is allowed to give appointments there.
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings, and we thank you for your mercy. Lord God, we pray that the things that are brought before the commissioners tonight would be decided, and those decisions will be pleasing to you. We pray that everything that's done here would be to honor you, and that you would continue to bless us, and pray for those that are in harm's way, and you would walk over them in place of edge of protection. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. I plead.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Everybody came tonight, wrote, called, Commissioner Riss, and I'm here. Commissioner Burger resigned. If you haven't signed in, please sign in. And my wife baked this stuff. I didn't, so it's fit to eat, okay? So it's some good stuff.
That's the only time you're saying it tonight.
We'll see. Approval of minutes. I've read the minutes, Commissioner Riss.
I've read the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
On second.
May first, 2025, at nine AM.
On a second.
All in favor? Two oh. Okay, payroll. I had two amounts, the corrected amounts, is that right, Sheila, three thirty? Payroll, an amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents. I make a motion that we approve payroll. All in favor?
On a second.
Aye.
Two oh. Regular claims is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents. Highway, this includes the highway claims, but we always pull out the highway now to keep them separate because of all the happenings that's happened in the past. We're trying to stay focused on the funds, to know where we're at. The highway claims is thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, but that is part of that two hundred and thirty-three thousand. I make a motion to approve the regular claims.
On a second.
All in favor? Two oh. Out-of-cycle claims. For anybody that's new here, in past years, out-of-cycle claims was absolutely astronomical.
That was crazy.
Sheila, you attested to that, correct? I want to thank everybody that's worked hard on these out-of-cycle claims, because we don't pay out-of-cycle claims no more unless they're allotted by the state, which is utilities, you know, Toshiba Contract, Epic Insurance, which is a big one for this year, this time, and our Visa cards. Those are the only things that's allowed to pay out-of-cycle. It used to be a lot of out-of-cycle claims paid for this and that, but we don't do that anymore. So the out-of-cycle claims totaled one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, four, four, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents. I'd like for the public to know that out of that amount, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents is our insurance. So you take that away, your out-of-cycle claims is not very much. So my hats off to all the department heads, especially the highway here, for keeping the out-of-cycle claims down. I make a motion to approve the out-of-cycle claims at the tune of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents.
On a second.
All in favor? Two oh. Claims have been approved. Okay, Sheila.
Financial report, you have a copy up front of you, there is the current balances. You haven't sent this to you, Julie.
Right.
Since then, there has been deposits and changes in funds. I'll highlight your highway fund. Their bonds came in, they have been one hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year, maybe one hundred and forty-six thousand this time. We hope that they stay that way. It will help build the cash balance. On your report, the two percent, it shows your cash balance at two hundred and thirty thousand. Your highway fund, it's actually three hundred and seventy-six thousand, your highway fund currently. So you're building there, still nothing but payroll needs to come out of that fund. And we moved a loss of the claims from eleven seventy-six to eleven seventy-three. Your cash balance at seventy-three is now seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Five hundred thousand additional appropriation from council. Monday night, we'll get all of those line items out of the red, and then those balances will be what you have to spend out of eleven seventy-three as your cash flows. You moved about a hundred and seven thousand more dollars in your local garden street fund, so that is up to three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
So for anybody out there that doesn't know, I'm not here to throw nobody under the bus at this time. It may happen later on. We're paying a lot of claims out of 2025 money for 2024 invoices. A lot of things happened. Greg's aware, Chad's aware. It's a multitude of things that caused that. It wasn't just one issue. Sheila and I have uncovered some things. We're still working on a lot of those things. State Board of Accounts will be here, when Sheila? Tuesday of next week. They're gonna be here for a while. They're gonna do the twenty-four and twenty-three budget. And they'll be looking at all the contracts, transfers, appropriations. You know, not picking on the county highway, by no means, but that's where a lot of our shortfall's at. There is some other departments that's got stuff in the red too, is that correct, Sheila? They're gonna be addressing that. They're gonna be looking aggressively at that and giving us an answer to their findings. Once we have those findings, those findings will be made public. So can't say too much more yet, because we're still doing some internal work and some external work on trying to find out some things, but Sheila, can't say enough, hats off to her. She has uncovered some stuff that she's going to present to the State Board of Accounts. And nobody stole any money. I want to make that clear. Once again, me and Greg talked about this. Me and Chad talked about it. Nothing was stolen. It was mishandled, and along with some other events as well. So all this will come out. It'll all be public knowledge for everybody to understand. So I want hats off to the highway department. We've had to make some tough decisions. Had to get rid of the part-time people, seasonal people. Had a gentleman retired and stuff like that. And I met with Greg and Chad, and Dave, and I talked about this. Payroll was our biggest issue. So, you know, Greg, he's the department head, superintendent. It's his call. Greg had to lay off two more people. We gotta get a handle on it. Because if we don't get a handle on it now, we won't have a handle on it at the end of the year. And I'm, you know, I'm an old counselor, thank Paulie, he's there back there. I have no intention of going to council. I'm asking them for a dime. We spend what we got. We get what we got coming in. Greg knows that. We'll work within our budget all through this year to see where we're at the end of the year. Eleven seventy-six fund is payroll, and that's the only thing we're paying now, that's payroll. And we've gained quite a bit already, and we'll continue to gain throughout the year. So, but for the residents out there, I know people call me, "Well, I heard you're not doing anything out on the roads." That's not correct. We got a plan. A good plan's coming together. Me and Dave both have talked about this, and I'm gonna stand on this. For anybody that wants the road paved, hear me out. Before the road gets paved, three things have to happen. Gotta put the ditching in. Gotta put the culverts in. We gotta cut the trees. The trees that's hanging over the road, I don't care if you're the homeowner and you got the greatest big bluest spruce, if it's hanging over the road, we're cutting the top of your biggest bluest spruce off. We have to, because a lot of roads, the trees are hanging over, the sun can't get to it. That's very important, that you have around the county, and how much water do you see running across the road? Because we don't have ditches in and culverts. Greg and Chad are fully aware of this. And we're getting ready to start the community crossroad grant roads here soon. And I don't know how many roads we got to do. It doesn't make any difference. The good news is, we don't have to do them all this year. We thought they had to be done at the end of August. That's not the case. We have until the end of next year to do those roads. And we still get, apply for our grant funding next year as well. So what that gives for us and for Greg is an opportunity to put the ditches, clean the ditches, put the culverts in, cut the trees back. It's strictly labor-oriented. He's got the culverts, or the majority of them. The only thing that we're probably, we're going to outsource, and I believe Greg has met with some tree trimmers of Owen County. Not tree trimmers of Monroe County, or Indianapolis, or Martinsville. We got enough local people right here in this county that can do the work that we need done. So Greg's met with them, and we're gonna utilize some of the local tree trimming people to cut the trees. So before that, you get your old blacktop, that's gotta be done. I'll get off my bandwagon on that. That way you don't have to talk about it, Greg. So things are looking up, and Greg and Chad, you know, we've had some tough meetings and stuff. We're gonna have more, but I appreciate what you're doing, both of you, and your staff. But I've been, I seen you there too, so. And your workers. Tell the workers thank you. Human resources position pending. Where's that draft you had, Sheila? We have, we're gonna present this to the council on Monday night. This is something we've been dealing with for years, haven't Paulie? Human resources. It's a contracted position under authority of the commissioners, but I don't kinda look at it like that. I want us and the council and to agree on this. But if we had a human resource administrator in place, the nonsense that's happened in the last two or three years wouldn't have went on. They would have nipped it in the bud, and chips would have fell where they may. But not having human resources administrator causes gigantic problems. Those people have nobody to go talk to, and our new attorney here, the last attorney, was the human resources officer. Not bad mouthing him, but the county attorney does not need to be a human resources administrator. He's already plainly told us that he'll have no part of it. So we're hoping on Monday night, when we present this to the council, they'll look on this favorably so we move forward to hiring a human resources administrator. It's got to happen. It's got to happen, because commissioners don't need to be human resources officers either. So Monday night, stay tuned. Jail project update. Paulie, you got any? Does anybody here?
We are, of course, waiting for your appointment to replace Terry on the art estate.
Yes.
Still, I think there is a little bit of thinking that needed to be done on the environment study. And then hopefully, when both those things are done, then we'll be able to set meeting.
Officer, they redid the language in the, didn't they redo the language in the second environment? They got that all redone, took it all.
Okay, because I know when it came back, it was for the whole property and not just the apartment we're buying, or, yeah, getting.
Yeah, I think that's been addressed.
Okay, great. So just wait for your appointment.
Once we do the appointment tonight, I told Craig Kaufman, if he can get that tomorrow, do it in the paper tomorrow, we have a meeting next week. Because we've been kicking the can down the road for fifteen years now, so we're not kicking the can anymore. Greg, you got something? Okay. So the jail update, like I say, there'll be an appointment here to the redevelopment commission here in a little bit. Once that happens, Craig Kaufman, the president of the redevelopment commission, Paulie's on the redevelopment commission too. If we can get a meeting set up next week, we can move forward with the swapping of the property for the jail. Is that right, Paulie? Is that working? Okay. Anybody in the public got anything to say about the jail project update or the human resources officer? Yes. Anybody got anything to say? Have a cookie, tell me what you think about that. Okay, the WTH grant, Sean Scott. Come on up.
I was worried it was gonna be stale donuts.
Well.
I was thinking about that for two hours.
Hit that red button.
I did, I already got one there.
Hit that button for us. Yeah, that where everybody can turn on.
There you go. All right, so back here again. Grant started out in October of 2024. It was brought up here by the, at that time, 911 director. Pursuing this grant, this is a grant from the GIO office. This is a no-match grant. You don't have to pay for it, you can get reimbursed or anything like that. This is money that they set aside, two million dollars they set aside, for each of the counties to be compliant. I believe you got an email this week from the GIO office saying, "We'd love to give you some money. Will you want it?" So.
We're gonna take it tonight. Approved.
Yeah, there you go. So like I said, what it is, is it's just getting federally compliant.
Yes.
We can do this as a project coordinator. We can do this with Jason. He's the one that does the addresses. We can do it with the MA. We can do it with the Auger, you know. But basically, what most of the counties in Indiana, they require that the, any, any contracts, of course, and any grants go in front of the commissioners to receive the blessings. So that's what we're doing. We're trying to educate everybody if you'd like to move forward. With this, we have already done, I think we're at twenty-seven right now. We just finished May. Every month, we can do nine, and then they stop it, and then the next month, they open it back up again. And so what we try to do is get somebody in on that next, next cycle. So that's, like I said, we'd like to be able to put you through the application process. We do the application. Basically, we just get the information from the county, fill it all in, and we already have the templates, and then basically whoever is the project coordinator watches us and says, and then we let them hit the go button. Send.
That would be your person you have in the office there, wouldn't it, Sheila? I mean, does he, would he be? Jason? Jason?
Yeah.
Is that Ja? He said Jason, but I didn't think that was the guy's name.
Yeah.
All right, so. What do you call this proposal, I mean?
Seed grant. Sowing enriched, enhanced data. Where they got that?
You're not expecting me to remember that, right?
We call it the next-gen 911 grant. It's called seed grant. That's why it comes from the GIO office. And it's sowing enriched, enhanced data.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the seed grant proposal from WTH.
On a second.
All in favor? Two oh. How's that?
Taking one to go. Thanks to the wife.
She got round the points, didn't she?
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, the BZA board appointment. I had one interested person contact me. And we checked into this, so nobody get their feathers ruffled. We make sure it was legal. Dave's risk, how do you spell your last name? Dave Risk, wife, Kristy Risk, wants to be on the BZA board. We had to check with attorneys to make sure it was legal, so there was no, and it is, it's fine. So I make a motion that we appoint Kristy Risk to the BZA board.
On a second.
All in favor? Two oh.
Can I make a comment, please?
You can.
We just got out of the, kind of spoke about like this, the husband-wife thing, nothing against Kristy.
Yes.
But do we really want to open up another channel where it's like that?
It's legal. That's the problem. You can't stop, can't stop it if it's legal. There's nothing we can do about it. I asked, because I checked, because that was my first thing. I didn't want anything flared up. I didn't want, you know, come back, "What were you doing?" So we had to check the legal to make sure that it was, and it is. You can't stop somebody.
Can I say something?
Uh-huh.
I mean, there's a, so is the other issue that was legal as well. I think there's a difference between being legal and ethical, and I just would like to see us get away from that. There's twenty thousand people in, I mean, early, you know, weekend, but that's just my opinion.
And I, and I understand. I do totally understand. You know the other issue that we dealt with for a long time? Here's the, here's the two things that I found out. An attorney here, if he backed me on this, he may tell me I'm wrong. Over the last two months, I've had meetings with FBI, State Board of Accounts, Attorney General's office. In today's world of society, and this is my two cents worth, and this is what I'm taking from these meetings. It's okay to be unethical and immoral, and you can have a job.
It doesn't make it right, though.
It doesn't make it right. No, it doesn't make, and I'm not saying, and I understand, you know, and nothing against, we, we have, I don't know if I should bring it up or not, but when it's not illegal, you can't stop them. We may not think it's right, you know what I'm saying, or we may not think it's immoral or ethical or whatever, but it's not against the law. And unfortunately, when I had my last meeting, I was told about a different circumstance. There's absolutely nothing you can do about it. Nothing.
I mean, you have a trip pointing to people. I mean, you can appoint somebody else. It's not, I mean, I know you're saying it's legal. I understand that. I'm just saying that there, there's, there's vast majority, I mean, you know, there's different pool out there that, you know, you could pool from.
Nobody's knocking down the doors to be on any of the boards.
I didn't know you were making that appointment tonight, so.
It's on the board, I mean, it's on the thing, same, yeah, I mean, you know, go ahead and speak up. I want to hear from the public. I do. I don't, and I understand where people's coming from. I really do. You know, Norm did. What's your thoughts?
Well, I mean, but I, and I understand that, but, you know, what's your, what's your thoughts on this particular person and stuff like that? Do you think it's, I want to hear from the public, this, this, you know? I think people look at it kind of like they're talking about. I'd also tell you, there's not people standing in line to do these jobs, those jobs. I don't know, I don't know whose contact and who, they want to be on those, so it's.
All right.
It's not, I mean, it's not a solve after specific.
Well, and you made a point, I don't know when it was, what day it was, we ran into each other. A lot of the problems that we've come across, because there's all kinds of boards, you know, just all kinds of boards, it's the follow-up, you know, after a certain meeting. Did this take place, or did that take place, or did this people call that person? Heather and I, we've dealt with that a lot on her, where she's at, on a lot of different things. There seems to be a lot of things that's fell through the cracks. I mean, a lot. And I don't, I'm not here to upset the apple cart, by no means. I don't, but I don't have anybody knocking on the door or signed up for these appointments. Yes?
Can I just give an example? Last weekend, we had the event at Tier Ten. And that gentleman went through and, and he went before the PCA. I mean, he was in a years process of doing this.
Yeah.
And then I know that you were on an email, as well as Dave, and probably have Cammy, about issues with Tier Ten. So if you've got issues coming from the public, and then you've got the commissioner's wife studying on the board, that's what I'm afraid is gonna happen.
And I totally understand, and I don't want, and Mr. Stutsmann's here, and I don't want to pick on him, by no means. He's running for commissioner. His wife's selected. He's a very guy, wonderful guy, very knowledgeable. Is that the same issue?
Well, it will be drawn into this conversation.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask, yeah.
I would say it's not, you know, okay. There's a difference between a position that is assigned to somebody who reports to the board and has influence over that department head correctly. And any expectation that that's not, I have influence over time on how that particular person's appointment or job underneath him is going to be affected. That requires the willing suspension of this leak to affect, there's not going to be influence. If the person who is appointed by the board, if that job is dependent, as it likely is, on the spouse to be an employee, that's going to influence it. Totally different scenario if the positions are elected and the public have choice.
Sure.
So now, that being said, I don't know that I characterize it, I'm running for the official. I've offered my services in this process a little bit of cost, and eighteen people will decide
Yeah.
whether or not my services complement the board, or whether somebody else's services complement it. But in that particular instance, you know, there's no, I have no influence or control over an independently elected official. So there's a difference in what we're, what we're talking about here.
I understand some of, I agree some of, some of, but that's okay. And like I said, and I think what we had in the past is the commissioners had control over everything. Or they thought they did. Commissioners have no control over elected officials. None. We have no authority over elected officials. We can't tell them what to do, how they do their jobs, or anything about that. That's not our job. I mean, we can encourage certain things or look at certain things, but we don't have control. I don't have control over our office, or so on and so forth. I think sometimes, maybe in the past, maybe it's just me, that there was elected officials that might have been told how they had to do things, or by certain other elected officials. We have no authority to do so.
No, but we're talking about the comparison here is to a position that the commissioner's appointed, who then has the spouse, like, which are underneath.
I understand, but my point was, do the public think that you would have influence over the trajectory? That's, that's what I'm asking. Do they think that you, I know it's too late to people, and I, I know you anyway, but the public's, it's always perception against reality. People perceive things in a certain way in reality. It's not. And I understand where everybody's coming from too, because if people perceive that, they're like, "Well, now he's in there, like, he's gonna take control," so give us a moment. Back order. Turn your mic off.
Do I have to turn it off?
Yep. We're going to table this to the June first meeting. Our attorney's going to look at it. I don't think there's any issues, but he's going to look at it. And we'll make a decision at the next meeting guaranteed. So we'll table it till then upon the attorney's review and his decision is what will stand on. Any, any other questions? I know. You're next, Dave.
Redevelopment Commission appointment. I'd make the motion to appoint Mr. Sam Hobbs to the Redevelopment Commission appointment.
I accept.
All agree.
Two oh. We'll give it Craig. I'll give it Craig after the meeting, or send him a message now, if you could. Go send him one around, tell him we need this advertisement, he's in the paper, we need to meet him next week. It can't be before Thursday because of the advertisement status and all the mumbo jumbo, and we've got to get through the paper and make Nicole happy, right?
Not, not fully, we're not considering the paper.
Well, I can show you the papers, so. Storage units. Who brought the, what's on, does that mean I bring it up, probably? Okay. Sorry. As a commissioner, I'm not in the storage unit business. Okay? The ground, we bought the property in twenty twenty, something like that, twenty nineteen. I can't remember when it was.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Seventeen or eighteen.
That's a long time ago now. We bought that property for the sole purpose of building the jail there. That was sole purpose. Only reason we bought the storage un, um, units. And it's, 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 it's fared well, halfway decent. It's brought in some income. But I'm not in the storage unit business, and I don't want to be in the storage unit business. We're going to let this play out to the month of June. We're going to see where we are on the income against the, we don't have much of expenses. But we have a lot of people, and it's, it's unfortunate. Everybody falls on hard times, been there myself. They can't pay the bills. Well, I'm not in the junk selling business either. Treasure selling business either. Could be somebody, one person junk, another person treasure, you know what I'm saying? I'm not in that business either. So we're going to, at the end of June, we're going to process all the finances. Look at the ins and outs of that, but there's a good chance that we'll be selling the storage units. There's up to ten other storage unit companies in business here in Owen County. Up to ten. I don't know what that word means, but it means a lot. And I think we need to get rid of, for me, it's a headache. For Sheila, it's a headache. I think we need to move on from the storage units. That's my opinion at this time, but we're going to give it through the month of June, see where our finances. And right now, that money is going to a line item for the sheriff for the new jail that's going to be built. So if you know of anybody that might be interested in storage units, let me know. Be more than happy, take them on a tour and see what they're worth. Brett, you know anybody who likes to buy storage units? How about you, sir? Well, good being in storage, so. Anyway, that'll happen at the end of June. You want to buy them? Yeah, boy, how much?
So, I can't remember when we bought those. I think they, I know they did a land survey, but there'll be some that'll have to be cut off of that. Part of that also is what EMS has set laws.
Yeah, it's the, I think it's three units I know of for sure. The one unit that sheriff's in doesn't go, and I don't know about the one that's right next to his either. That may be where we have to keep. Yes.
The way the property sits right now, the sheriff is on it and, and EMS.
Yeah, absolutely.
All of our storage, I think, is looking to expand. They were in C P today about permitting, so that would be something that we can put in contract to see if they're.
Well, since you know who they are, get ahold of them, tell them to call us. John Hunter, you know anybody that wants to buy storage units?
No.
You know about everybody else in the county that does stuff. You want them, sir? Would you like? Trying to help, John, a little bit.
You want to stay retired, don't you, John?
Highway Department update.
Have a good evening, commissioners.
You got good nu, you got good news, right?
I think so.
Okay. Nope, and bad news? Not tonight.
Just so everyone knows, we did meet with tree trimmers, like President Hobbs said, all Owen Countyans. We met last Tuesday. We took a tour of the roads that we wanted trimmed out. Everybody was together. Everybody was on the same page. Expect to have something done by your next meeting of proposals from the, those gentlemen.
Awesome.
Commissioners, there is an ordinance in place that the Highway Department is to go to ten hour work weeks when school is released. I am asking that that either be repealed or put on hold for this year.
That's a four three. You want to keep it a five two?
Keep it five days instead of go to the four, ten hour days.
I agree.
With the amount of people that we have, there's no way to run five days a week and split a schedule. I'm afraid we'd get into too much overtime if we worked four and had all people in.
What do you think, Dave? You've been talking to him about this, so.
I said we bring him back to five two, keep it five two for the rest of the year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I agree. We need to repeal the ordinance, sir. And it's difficult.
Well, you talked about, you mentioned repealing it. I don't know that you need to repeal it. You could just say, I think, that you were suspending it for the purpose of this summer.
Okay.
Now, if you're saying you want to get rid of it forever, we can go ahead and do a repeal.
You want to just suspend it for now and see what happens, or?
It never worked for you, right, Greg?
I, gentlemen, I don't believe it's ever really worked for you. I said we just.
Okay, that's fine. Ready, you can do that.
Make a motion.
I make a motion, make Highway Department five two. Five on two oh.
Never counted.
Four three.
Two oh, I agree as well. Allow the county attorney repeal your work ordinance, and you'll stay at five, eight hour work days.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioners, I had the need to email to you and N dot agreement for signature. It's for the official reimbursement for Little Flock Road. Commissioners, for whatever reason, your signed copy isn't anywhere to be located, so we need to get that resigned.
I checked, I checked Sheila. I didn't, I don't have.
We got another one in here then? Okay. Okay, we'll get it signed tonight, Greg. This is, now, for the public out there, Little Flock Road is going to be paved in its entirety north to south.
That is correct.
N dot's paying for it?
That is correct.
Because of them tearing up the road
Yes.
when they was repairing the bridges. And that's at a tune of two hundred and twenty seven thousand dol, two? Mm-hmm. Two, two hundred and twenty seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Greg, do we have any idea when they're going to start?
I do not, commissioners. So once the signed agreement is to them, I will have better communications. It will have to basically operate like the community crossing grant. The money, it'll be approved, the money will come to Owen County, and we will have to go public for it. There is some work to do out on Little Flock in regard to redoing some ditches and some things, so that will need to be done. It would either be late this year, but more than likely next spring, I would think.
Okay. Has N dot said anything to you about White Road off of forty three, where they raised the highway there?
Actually, David spoke with me last week about that, and I've reached out to N dot about that situation.
So I'm just going to give that back to Greg, or give this to Sheila so she can make coffee, don't forget. Okay, sir? Go right ahead.
The gentleman also emailed to you was a softworks agreement. Softworks is the software program that the Highway Department uses. After looking this over, gentlemen, I think there's time for you to look this over and get back to the next meeting.
Yes.
Because there are some questions that I have about it.
Me too. I agree, I agree.
I'd like to put it off to then.
That's fine.
And then, lastly, gentlemen, the community crossing grant.
I think on that softworks, it says June, they wanted it by June first. So if.
You're absolutely correct, but I still believe there's time. We may not be under contract, but we're.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't sign it tonight anyway. I don't care if it's due tomorrow, because there's questions in it tonight, and the attorney's going to have to look at it as well.
Lastly, commissioners, would be the awarding of the community crossing grant, I have looked both over. I did reach out to Tessa Salzman with N dot and had confirmed that the entire project needs to be bid by one contractor. So I would request that the commissioners award the bid to the lowest bidder, and that was the E M B. We've worked with those folks before and have had issue.
Shame, we can't use both of them, but that's what they say, we've got to do that.
That is exactly what I was saying.
That's shame, so. I make a motion that we approve E M B paving to do the community crossing grant roads.
I second.
Hold the favor, two oh.
Thank you, commissioners. As of yesterday, we had all three injection hole patchers running. They were all out working today. They all seem to be working well. They'll be working every day patching holes. Gentlemen, we will do a, we have one there, but we will do a video so folks can understand how that works. The machine's a little slower. Then if you see a crew going through and throwing coal mix in the hole, the machine actually goes through it, has air compressor, blows the hole out, cleans it, and then has the patch mix that it puts in. So we will have that out, but all three of those machines are working. Labor wise, it only takes two people, a truck operator and, and a operator for the machine. Unless you're on a road that's heavily traveled, then we do send out some fighters on most of the roads. It's just a personal problem.
I've had some calls about them, and thanks for you guys being out using that machine. It works a whole lot better than throwing it in a hole and driving over with a dump truck, so. You got anything else?
Lastly, commissioners, just want to let you know, we have roads that we have located in regard to community crossing, start ditching. We have run into a little bit of an issue, we can be put off in an eight one one situation in an area that we want to work. We're going to try to dig in tomorrow and find out what it is, because if I'm not mistaken, I think this is now the fourth day in a row we've been told we can't work there, so.
What's your reason, they said?
Well, it's just an R E M C hole, and it just really doesn't make, they've approved both of them, but there's a short section in the middle. So we need to find out exactly what that is, and I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
We're now getting out there and start that process.
That's good. Well, I know it's going to take a while on the ditching. I, I'm sure you've been out on the roads, you have identified the culverts and stuff that need to be replaced, and the tree trimming and stuff too, so.
Lastly, Chad and I spent the last few days out with FEMA, looking at areas. I don't have a whole lot of information in regard to any input that they had, but they have been in County, and we've been with them the last few days, actually going to different projects and showing them the damage.
That's good. Jack, you got any, you want to add to any of that, the FEMA and IDHS on the roads, bridges?
IDHS has contacted me the last couple of days, wants some very specific information about five different bridges. And with the caveat that they are trying to get the maximum amount of money to Owen County that they can. When they were here on, yesterday, they, prior earlier was focusing on just a couple of bridges, but now they're looking pretty hard at five. So I think that's a, that's a good thing.
That's good.
Yeah. Been asking a lot, and they have been thrilled, been out of the Highway Department, administrative staff, and they've responded well, and requested more information today, and Greg's going to get to them soon as he can tomorrow, so. I take that as a compliment.
Yeah, thanks to Jack. I mean, he's kept everything coordinated, and we do have a list in regard to more bridges for tomorrow, so. I hate to speak, but it is, we are looking at it very closely.
Well, that's good. At least they're looking this time.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, but better than what we've had in the past, right, Jack?
Exactly.
So, good news, good news, no worries there. Anything else? So, good news, good news, no worries there. Anything else?
Second one, the crossing's grant, don't forget that you have to have it in by June twenty-seventh. You missed the first round on April thirtieth. If you don't have it in, do you, did you get the signal number? What you got, and you have to have those things done on June twenty-seventh?
Got it? Okay, thank you. Department heads, ladies officials. Oh, boy.
So the nine one one board met Monday and we've been in discussion about the radio project and doing what we can to get it moved forward. We did, that was the main focus of our discussion on Monday. So the nine one one board has met and discussed the radio project. We want to move it forward and there was a motion made to recommend to the commissioners that J and K Communications be the vendor for the radio build-out part of the project. This is all from that request proposal that we did, you know, right? So, um, so yeah, uh, we're recommending that J and K Communications be the vendor for the build-out portion of, of that. So we're looking for the commissioners to...
True. Well, Chris, we've been in a lot of conversation about this, me and you, for the last long time. And, um, you know, we had some ups and downs here, you've had some ups and downs and, um, but you did meet, met with the board and stuff like that. And this is your recommendation. I trust the board because of your public safety and you know more about it than a board of commissioners sitting here, even though I've been involved with it for quite some times, back when I was sheriff. But, um, uh, the council have committed one point three million dollars to this project. It's a much needed project and if you could, in the short term, explain to the public what we're, what, what we're trying to do as a county hall.
Okay, well, um, give, give everybody a little bit of history of what the radio project is. And I'm going, I'm going to just back all the way up to the beginning, uh, twenty thirteen when they did, when they did the narrow banding. What that means is a radio frequency, if, if your radio frequency, let's say is, I'm just going to draw number, number one. The, a radio frequency goes above and below that, that line and it could, it could vary at the time. Twelve point five megahertz above the line and twelve point five megahertz below the line. So you had this radio wave like this. In twenty thirteen, the FCC made us do what was called a narrow band. So now you can only vary six point two five megahertz above the line and six point two five below the line. Prior to narrow banding, you could have somebody, a whole city talking to somebody in, in, um, the God's port. Just on a handheld radio, you could just, you could just do that with, with the system that we had. When they went to narrow banding, it just knocked that whole project or the whole radio system down. Radios can't reach as far on that, on that lower, uh, level of, of frequency. So we've been fighting this since twenty thirteen. We've tried a few patches here and there and trying to make it work. It, it's, it's, it's only getting worse for whatever reason. So we've always relied on vendors to help us try to figure out what to do to fix it. We brought a consultant in and he's made suggestions. We put this project out for what's called a request for proposal. So we put it out to multiple vendors. Three people came back with proposals. And, um, one of the proposals, uh, got thrown out because the, the system they proposed, uh, was not expandable. In other words, if something else happened down the road, we'd have to throw all his equipment away, start all over. So we didn't want that. They were the cheapest, but it left us no room for expanding. And then we had a nine one one board meeting, uh, months back and we decided with the problems that the, um, the Sheriff's Department and Spencer Police have with the state ran eight hundred megahertz system. The problems they're having with coverage, it would be nice to bring them on board with this project also. So kind of that was, that was on Monday, our nine one one board, one board meeting. We had a meeting with the, uh, county council that night. So there was some quick numbers drawn. Went to the council, the council graciously gave us the money to do this project. And, um, we had, uh, already selected and said, well, we'll go with this vendor. But that vendor can't do it for the money that we kind of wrote or figured our figures on. There is another vendor that is able to do it for that, in fact, just a tiny bit less than that. So that's what we're doing tonight is suggesting that we move from the one vendor that can't do it. He's four hundred thousand dollars above the amount of money that we have appropriated to us. I was not going to go to the council for another four hundred thousand dollars. I wasn't going to do that. So what I'm doing tonight is suggesting that the commissioners change from one vendor to another to allow us to get the premium radio system that's rated for public safety, um, at the price that the council's able to give us. So, is that pretty much explaining it all? So that, that kind of lets you guys know that we're having problems, even EMS, when we get dispatched out to, to, let's say, Patricksburg, Cold City. We have problems communicating back. Fire departments are having a tremendous amount of trouble communicating back with, with the county dispatch. And here, here in the dispatches, sometimes they don't come out to the fire departments because it just doesn't travel that far. So this hopefully should fix the whole problem. It's a, it's a system that is, um, able to, to be expanded on other services. If we had a huge disaster, it would take some programming, but some other services, even if they don't have the same brand of radio we have, they would still be able to talk on the system. That's, that's something that's huge after nine eleven. That was something they found in nine eleven is people coming into New York had different brands of radios that wouldn't work on different systems and so... So that's kind of, that in a nutshell, or great big nutshell, I'm sorry.
Could you, could you go back through that just one more time?
Yeah, well, uh...
No, I, Chris, you know, I, I value your opinion and the board's opinion too and stuff on this. So I make a motion that we move to allow J and K, um, to move along with this project for the build-out of the radio tower project. Or the radio project, not tower.
Okay, so I appreciate that. And I think you guys, I guess you vote on it. I'm, I'm sorry, I jumped in.
All right.
I'm sorry, you're good.
Go ahead, you can vote on it too.
Go ahead.
Make a motion and Dave second it. Hold the favor, two oh.
Okay, what I was going to say, um, is that, um, I've been in contact with our consultant. He's going to jump in on this immediately. He said that he will, uh, give the, the vendor notice to proceed tonight.
Good.
He has already started, um, to draft up agreements. There'll be agreements between Hoosier Energy, um, R E M C and Patricksburg Fire. The reason Patricksburg Fire is because there'll be a tower erected there on their property. You guys will have assets on their, on their property, so there has to be an agreement to cover you guys.
Sure.
So he's working on those, uh, agreements as we speak. He said by morning or tomorrow, he will have me, uh, information on what the lead time is on the radio, um, hardware that's going to have to be ordered to do this project. His desire is to definitely get this project up and going before leaves come off of the trees.
Good.
To assure that it can be tested before the leaves drop, because you know, radio signals will travel better when the leaves are gone. So he wants the system tested before the leaves drop. The other part of what we were saying, uh, as far as Patricksburg, having a tower, uh, there's other parts to this project. The tower will be at Patricksburg. It'll have to be put out for bid. They'll have to re-ground the tower site on Ponderosa for the, um, R E M C tower. And, um, there were some other smaller items that'll need to be done. He's putting the bid notification for the newspaper. He's putting that together as we speak. He said he'll have it to meet by noon tomorrow so that we can get it sent to the newspaper and advertised. It'll have to be advertised two times, I guess. Hopefully we'll get it in next Wednesday and then the following Wednesday. And it will, uh, if everything works right and the stars align, we'll have bids to open your second meeting in June.
Awesome.
I think that's it.
Have a cookie.
I'm going to.
All right, first off.
You guys have anything else, anything?
Appreciate all you're doing. I know you're wearing many hats.
Thank you.
Any other department heads, ladies officials? Jack, you got anything?
I've already said, I've heard about, uh, about FEMA and, uh, I was hearing Chris say they have a radio project.
Well, that's good news, what we heard about FEMA today, that, that is heading in the right direction. Hope this keeps going that way, so...
Chris took this radio project on, didn't have time to do it. Spent a few more hours, a day, a week, whatever it took to push it all through, so he, uh, he definitely deserved security of his, of all his actions.
Absolutely. I want to thank, uh, Sheila Reeves again and her staff. Man, been barbed, barbed them with a lot of stuff, um, to say the least, but, um, Beth, she's, is she still here, Beth?
I'm here.
Okay, got to get you some hot balls, so. Just pass it on to all your staff, please, that we thank them for the work that you're doing. And hopefully if we get to human resources administrator, um, hired here soon, that will help you a ton. Take off some of, some of the strain off your office on, and put it on to them, so that's, that's the goal as well. Public comment? Anybody?
Is that us?
You're, are you, you public?
No.
Come on up, come on up, public.
Well, I didn't know there was a lot of publics in here.
Well, then, you're, you're going to get to go first.
I'm in, I'm here on behalf of, uh, uh, Haltam Heights, which I'm sure you know.
I'm glad you're here. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I've been complaining for ten years now, ever since I've been down there.
State your name.
I remember, uh...
What's your name, sir?
Tom Morgan.
I know where you are.
Yeah, I've been...
Tell the public names.
I remember that when, when y'all come down, we talked about it and, uh, John Reeves sat there and told me that I knew what I was getting into when I moved down there, which I didn't. I remember as a little boy coming down here fishing at Catwick. That's what I thought I was getting into. I thought that people would start cleaning up if they seen me doing it and that wasn't working, you know, so... But, uh, yeah, just like see something done with Haltam Heights, it's terrible.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I agree, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Billy Davis.
No.
Part of Haltam Heights too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Sean Stevens came in, seen us about two weeks ago.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, there was a couple of properties, I guess, that were being fined or whatever, but we've got some where they would like to throw up in here. What do we have to drop down, call?
No, Sean is aware. Heather's, Heather's from Billy's department. She's Sean's supervisor.
Okay.
And I, I have, um...
Oh, you, okay.
Spoken with Sean as well. Here's what's happened in the past.
Excuse me.
And not throw nobody on the bus, okay? Here's what's happened in the past, nothing.
They done passed on the buck, huh?
Nothing happened.
I said they're done passing the buck, huh?
Well... Well, yeah, and, and it's unfortunate now and I'm not, and I'm not going to throw nobody on the bus in the past because I could throw a bunch of people on the bus.
Yeah.
But this meeting is not going to be a time for it. That'll come later. No, I don't want to do that either, but there has been a lot of broken promises. A lot of people saying, we're going to do this, 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 and this, and nothing gets done, nothing ever gets done. So my assurance to you and also to Heather and to the rest of the public. Meeting adjourned, let's go. Is that far along, son?
Yeah.
Is, we have a new county attorney. He, he's excellent in what he does. He's been involved. I think he's even went out to Haltam Heights on occasion. The one thing that we have to do is, and I spoke to the attorney yesterday or the day before, is something I've said a long, long time ago, is your ordinances have to have teeth. Okay? And those teeth have to bite. Ordinances have to have teeth in them that bite. The county ordinances, okay?
Yeah.
So things have happened in the past, people's been fined and so on and so forth. And maybe they didn't pay their fines, maybe they did pay their fines or whatever. But with our new attorney, when you do step A, B, C, D, when you get to finding the other step E, it comes to him. Okay? Now, he's the kind of guy that's not going to let it put on a shelf. I guess that don't, if that's the right word to use or...
Sure.
Because a lot of times, things have been put on a shelf and it didn't get done. And normally when they're back here, me and Heather have talked, the, the, one of the biggest issues the county's had, there's been no follow-up with nothing. It's just, yeah, we'll take care of this. Yeah, we'll take care of that. It doesn't work that way. There's got to be people that's willing to follow up and do that. And I know Heather, she's new, but my hat's off to you for what you've done so far. And Sean is working aggressively. He has a list of about four hundred and some properties that need to be looked at. And he's going to go out, do his thing, Heather will do her thing. And if people don't get any compliance to what they need to do, he'll do his thing and that's where the teeth is going to be. Because we've had it in the past. It just went to point A and point B and that was it though.
When's this thing going to start rolling?
It already started.
I ain't seen no black holes or dumpsters or anything yet.
Well, no, 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 no. The one thing you have to understand, the people that own the property
Right.
are responsible for the property.
Right.
Okay?
You might, yeah, you know Joe, uh, Patson. He ain't going to do nothing.
Okay, he may not do nothing.
Mm-mm.
But we can put liens against people's properties, put them on the tax roll if they don't pay them. But that's where he comes in. He's the guy that's, will have the answers for that.
I can't take it much longer. I'd like to see my property worth something.
I agree.
And, and people have been dragging their feet for ten years and I'm tired of it. And if I don't see no action within a couple of months, I'll give you all a couple of months. I'm heading to Marion County.
Marion County?
Yep. I'm going to Marion County.
I'm going to call you on that one.
Are you?
Yeah, you ain't going to Marion County.
Why ain't I?
Because you're not. I know you, I know you better than that. You're not going to Marion County. Why did you go to Marion County? Yeah, you don't. Something's got to be done. We, we just got another call, um, about, there's a property up in Quincy. We have dealt with this person. I dealt with him with Sheriff.
Why you deal with him?
With Sheriff. With Sheriff.
Just, just.
It's, sorry, Tom.
What do you call that? What was that, that Sean dude? He said, I can't think of the word. No, yeah, take it away from them and clean it up and sell it to somebody else.
You know what? That'd be great if it was just that easy, but guess what? It's not. People have legal rights out the wazoo, and he can attest to that, so.
Maybe our president might straighten this up.
Well, you know, I don't know, I'll talk to him, I gotta talk to him next week.
Yeah, give him a call, would you? What's his number?
But we're, we are going to address it, okay? We are going to address the issue. We have to, because it's county-wide. There's property everywhere with.
I understand that, but they let everybody riffraff come from Indianapolis, don't take a, even a, take their credit scores or nothing like that. You know, that's something they need to do, okay? Somebody laughing?
I'm laughing.
I am, I'm laughing.
I'm gonna, and once again, I understand where you're coming from.
Quit letting the people come from Indianapolis down here.
We, how you gonna stop?
All they're doing is coming down here to sell their dope.
Yeah.
You know it.
I can't, I can't say this for sure.
Selling their dope down there, and nobody's still not doing nothing about it. I see them roll in and out of there on my camera. I mean, my head looks like I'm watching the damn, excuse my language, I'm sorry, but ten years of this stuff is ridiculous. Ridiculous.
I understand. I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dispute because I'm right there with you, I agree.
I think there's people coming from Indy, but I'm sure there's people around here, you know, making the, whatever.
Well, and there's, there's people just around here that's like living, I mean, there's the one thing against having stuff on your property, than bags of trash and rats and stuff like that. There's a problem. I got nothing against people, you know, John Hunter, he's been around since Jesus walked on water. You know, he's, he's, he farms, he's got tractors, he's got equipment, he's got stuff. It's stuff, but you don't have bags of trash where rats and stuff are popping out of it and so on and so forth, that's different. Those are the things that I'm looking at, you know, and that's, and that's what he's looking at, so.
Well, he's seen it, he's, you know, right there on Brandon Road.
It's being looked at, Tom. You ain't going to Marion County.
Oh, yeah, I will, I'll go up there and see Mr. Mike Brons.
Okay.
Don't think I won't. I will.
We are looking at Billy. We got a good attorney, and that's where, I mean, the ordinances have to have teeth in them, but the ordinance can have teeth.
And can bite.
But I'm not gonna put you on them. I'm not calling him out, but he's a guy that can make it bite. Does that come? That's a fair statement?
It is.
Because we've had it in the past where maybe the attorneys did bite. I say bite, gonna bite hard, make it hurt. Set an example to the rest of the people that it hurts.
One striking around.
So, that's what we got him for.
I thought I'd let you know that I'm going on two years of not drinking, so.
Really?
I'm serious.
Yeah, pretty tough, Tom.
Saying I'm not going to Marion County, ain't it?
You're, you're not going to Marion County.
Okay.
All right, we're on.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, just jump in, both feet too, will you? State your name, state your name.
I'm Diana Nichols.
Hello, Diana Nichols.
Know me.
Yep, I know you.
It's been ten years I've been dealing with it for thirty. I tried to go home on the market, and.
Where you live, Diane?
Holton Heights.
Holton Heights.
Been there over thirty years, and I've got a lot of blood, sweat, and tears and money in my place.
Yep.
It didn't look like it that I did, and it's been a struggle, very difficult struggle for me because I'm alone, I'm very ill, but it's been ten years, tried thirty of it, you know? Now, years ago, I did go to Indianapolis, and we got things done. I've never seen anything like it in my life, eh? We had people with cold spells, shoveling gourds like you. You know, needless to say, starting to get, but we're talking gourds. You know, I don't need to give a rat, I've seen a rat in my life one time, and that was in New York, Manhattan, New York, and I went to the other way, and had to get out of there.
You've only seen one rat in your whole entire time?
I've had one rat.
Take a trip with me, I'll show you.
But that is my fear, that they're gonna get in on me, you know? And that they, I see Sean out there, and I talk to him quite often, and John Reeves, and I got to meet Heather tonight, I've spoken to her several times, you know? And I know they are working this project, I know that, and they've got a lot to do because it is not just Holton Heights, it is the whole.
It's everywhere.
It is, you know? But what they do is, is we've got these people out here, I hate to say this, just laughing at them, they're laughing at ya, they don't, you know? I'm not laughing, it's not funny. I tried to put my house on the market twelve years ago, or about twenty-five years ago. She come out, she come in there, she said, "You know, Diane, she said, 'I don't want to waste your time on my time,'" she said, "'And I'm going to put this on the market for you,'" she said, "'That Eddie West, you know, time,'" and she wouldn't put it on the market, so see, they're hindering me from getting out.
I understand.
Because I want out, oh, I can't live like that either, it's not the way I want to live.
I agree.
And then they've got some back in the movie next to, I took care of that place for eighteen years. I kept it immaculate, it went on and get things up, you know? And now he started jumping up, "Uh-uh, not next to me," because I will complain.
Can't even see his grass, I mean, he's got so much junk.
Rich, yeah, you know, and I've talked to Rich, I tried to be nice to Rich, you know? They all know me, I can be nice, I can behave, we know that, we know.
I've had that conversation with him.
You know, I don't want to go back to state, I'm tired, okay? I'm, I'm getting old, and I'm very ill, very ill, you know? And I just went through a series of eight cert and trying to stay alive, you know? And I really don't want to start my home, and I really don't want to move, you know? I've been there too long.
Right.
I want to die in peace is what I want to do, you know? I don't want to start over, I'm too old to start over, I'm back door at seventy. Oh, yeah, and, but they're laughing at you folks, it's really ticked me off, you know? It's people, you know, they see my career, too, you know? Now, I'm wondering, simple suits, lawsuits, gifts, you know, because I will, you know? I'm not an attorney, I mean, I just studied law, studied law a long time, like I said, getting old and getting things, and I have to provide, and it certainly, certainly shouldn't be my job, shouldn't be my job, you know? But it's like you told the garbage cleaners, the first trailer you come to, other houses, on a service, it looks like they literally opened the window and just threw garbage out the window, okay? Now, they piled garbage bags on their front porch, okay? And it got so bad that they couldn't get in their front door, okay? Eh? So they just took a few bags off, instead of getting out there and cleaning it up, and, you know, I pay, I pay a lot of money for my garbage removal, you know? It was nothing, nothing's cheap anymore, we all know that, we're all ones who are kids there, I think, you know, but I pay, and I'm on social security, and it's not much to live on, you know? If I can do it, they can do it, you know? But they literally just throw a few bags out and then they go on, you know? And let builds back up, you know? And I'll throw another few back. I'm thinking, what is wrong with these people? You know, what, what is wrong with these people?
Yeah, it's like you guys.
I'm not cutting that fall.
It's like you guys come down and find them, and they get rid of five bags, and three months later, there's thirty more bags sitting out there.
And that's.
That's the point versus saying, yeah, laughing at you.
Years ago.
And rightfully so.
They are, they are. Years ago, the neighbors got together, and come to me, "Why me?" I don't know, I don't know why me, that it was me, they chose me, "Diane, you gotta do something." "Oh, okay, well, you're gonna have to help me." "Oh, yeah, we'll help you there." Okay, so I get to John Reeves, I'm working this project, tied to him, tied to petitions. "Oh, what's that?" "Bunch of cowards." "I'm not coward, I'm not coward, and I never will be."
I'll tell you, I'll tell you like I told these two gentlemen here, Diane.
Step up.
We, we, we were moving in the right direction.
I know you are.
And.
I know you are.
We got, we got, we, we got the dog that'll bark, and he's not gonna bark, he gonna bite.
Good.
And it's gonna hurt.
Good.
And that's what it's gonna take.
It is what it's gonna take, you know, I mean.
We got, we got a good building department now, we got a good crew.
Yes.
Heather and Sean both.
Poor guy says, "Diane, I'm afraid to come down there." I said, "I live alone, I'm old, I'm sick, I can barely walk or breathe, how do you feel?" "Ah," he said, "I don't like, this is why I don't come down if I've done a big test. Well, can you give me a damn a piece of my dick?"
Well, I'm not, I'm not worried about that, I'm not, I'm not going there.
Yeah.
I'm telling you straight up.
I don't want to be harmed, I don't want to be killed, I don't want that, so I think we just want to honor neighbors.
I understand, and, but listen to what I'm telling you.
I'm listening.
We got a new building administrator.
Yes, sir.
We got a new building inspector, and they're working good together, stuff like that, and we've got a great attorney. And this is where the teeth is going to, this is what's gonna bite.
This is who I want to talk to about the issues?
You talk to us, you talk to the commissioners, we'll deal with them.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
You get cranky some days through the weeks, so you don't want to bother me.
But we know that you guys are working this.
We are.
I know it's true, and I see that, but when you wake up and you see another bag of garbage, you get upset.
I understand.
This agitated, irritated, aggravated, annoyed, you know?
You hang in there.
I am.
Hang in there.
I have no other choice right now, I just, I'd like to see.
They had to go to Marion County with Tom.
I've never been to Marion County, okay?
So.
And, and, you know, but they cleaned it up too, they did, they cleaned it up. I didn't see them move school paths.
Put up with it.
But you might have looked at it again, it's got right back to that, and that was twenty-five years ago.
All right.
Oh, he talked ten years, I'm talking, when he taught.
We're on it, like a whole bowl of ham sandwich.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to Marion County. Thanks, Heather. Thanks, Sam.
Kevin, how are you?
Well, that's right.
Thank you, yes, I am. You got anything, Kevin?
Well, I just wanted to call Greg on High Springs, see if that's where Rose is going to go.
Did you catch him? Is he out there? Go try, go run him down, Kevin, don't let him get away from you. Roger, you got anything?
Probably did, but, you know, one thing you said last meeting, I appreciate that without you before, they've done a lot of mistakes late in the past, and, and, you know, put the blame on anybody's not gonna correct it, but turns out all the veterans' park has been doodled over by the commissioners for over fifty years, and it's a mess up there, and I don't go, and you guys have stuck with it.
I was just out there, Roger, the other day. I was just out there the other day.
I know, and we walked part of it, been due a long time back, and I appreciate you making a statement to one of the sixty-eight acres, not eight acres, however, it's been destroyed, and I'm against where you're putting the jail, but I know you're moving forward, and I don't think we've looked at it in the, I think it'll bite us down the road, that's a piece of ground, I think, too close to the quarry, and there's still stone there, and we need stone, and someday it may need open. We put the jail there, it probably will not, or hopefully it will not, but as messed up as the park is, move on the park, on the north side of the park ground, and you've got septic and everything there. I've always been for being at county-owned properties, I still think it's there, and with the movement, you know, move industry down that way, I think we're probably within the construction area of having septic to the county-owned property, or at least, you know, bits and pieces I'm picking up, but, you know, it's complicated, I don't know, I don't have a good answer for a lot of it, just, you know, I have some thoughts and seen, but it's a shame that we've destroyed that park, it was for the veterans, and it was to be sixty-eight acres, and it has been totally chopped up and destroyed, and, and I, I don't think it's gonna cost the county a lot of money to crack some of it, it's just gonna be a lot of work for you people, and that, that I don't like, but I mean, you guys got enough to do, and I'm totally cool with that.
Ah, one more thing, never heard of?
Talking?
One more thing, never heard of? And we can beat a dead horse till.
Yeah.
A dead horse is dead, no sense keep beating it. The jail project, we're, we're in a situation now with the jail project, if we don't do something this year, we're already in trouble. Was in trouble one night with the sheriff. John Hunter knows what the, all his turd is like, and that's all it is, folks, it's a turd that we keep polishing with taxpayers' money. We have thrown more money down the drain on delays, dilemmas, woulda, coulda, shouldas, just like you said, no more. Whether they like it, we move it out to the quarry, or they don't, some people are gonna be okay, some people are gonna be mad, you know what? It's just like the veterans' park went out there, and Dave and I, and we did, we're meeting with IDAM out there next week.
I'm quite glad to be there if it.
Yeah, there'll be no jail building on that property out there, I guarantee you, they'll not allow it.
Well, that's our fear, at least two of us, our fear that that's gonna cause us to shut the park down, and that's one of the nicest things we.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
They make it too close to the playground.
I understand, but.
Make us nervous.
Makes me a little bit nervous too, I don't think, now, I could be wrong, it may go that way, I hope it doesn't, but you know, that dump, that, it's not really what I call dump, it's been opened up there for years, people to bring brush and, and trees and stuff like that, and that's what they've been doing for years, filling in that hauler right there with brush and trees.
When I was in grade school, they burned that every day, when you left the school on your old hillside, you spilled that dump every day you went to school now, but that was always been on the park.
But that's, but that back when it was a dump, it's not a dump now.
No, it's not supposed to be.
It's not supposed to be, every now and then, somebody slip up and throw a bag of trash over the rail, and we had to go pick up and stuff like that, but when IDAM gets here next week, and we go meet with IDAM, IDAM's gonna tell Zach and what we gotta do.
Oh, yeah.
Whether we like it or not.
That's correct.
But our, our goal is to make sure that the veterans' park is as nice as it could be. We're not gonna do nothing until we're here from IDAM.
You know, a lot of people, not been up through there, but when Dave and I and two or three others walked it that one day, I smelled something, I did know it was up there, and people need to appreciate something, there's holly trees up there, there's a little cluster of holly trees, and they're native, it's been checked, they are native of Indiana, and that just need to all get out, if we got some people who would like to make a volunteer down the road to restore that target for just an attraction park, and that part of it, I'm not worried about, I don't think there's any passive remains, other than the fact that we need to protect that area, people from that area.
I agree.
And that defense will take care of some of that.
I think, I think.
That is a real gem we have, people's never been up there, they go up and look it over, they're amazed what we have there.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, it needs to be kept.
And I'm available if you need, you know, need to be hauled at.
We're, we're meeting with IDAM on the twenty-second out there.
Right.
And however long it takes, and we're gonna get their report from them and whatever they tell us, we gotta do, whatever they tell us to do is what we're gonna do, so, but I don't, I'm hoping it doesn't affect the park or the stream, because there's a lot of things that can be done down there to that park to make it nice.
And a lot of things been done by donation and donated money, and we try to keep it from being a burden to the county, and, and we do know that we're under your insurance and the utilities, and, and as soon as we get a feel of what's happening, we've done a lot of work to do to the playground area, and of course, we're also waiting, we need some guidance from the county's insurance on what we should do. from the county's insurance on what we should do, and.
And that's like, and I told Pam this, I told her this, first, quit sending me forty emails a day.
Marky?
I told her, quit sending me forty emails a day.
I agree with you.
But we can't.
No, you don't, no, you don't.
We can't do anything with the Veterans Park till IDM tells us what we gotta do.
Exactly.
I don't, we don't want to spend money on doing something when something could go south.
Right. For the people here, I've been a treasure in the park, as far as the donation park, since the day we opened the account and, you know, timber been up, and we've had a lot of groups of men that built that building up there, it's amazing how much he donated in time, and so we really have something there that should be proud of, and so in other words, I'll fight to keep it open, but, but I don't want nobody hurt, but I don't want nobody sick from being up there.
I don't either, and I'm sure IDM's gonna tell us, so, thank you. Anybody else from public?
I'm here for Donkey Berries.
For what?
I want to put a building up, give you a different setback.
You need to talk to, you're, you're at a commissioners' meeting.
That's why I was.
We need to talk about that event this weekend, done it in the last year, this weekend, no? Good.
There's a chair, this is the one thing that they changed.
What are you talking about, what are you doing? Glad you came, sir, but you just came to the wrong meeting, I appreciate the company anyway.
Yeah, I'm awesome, I didn't know there was a veteran park, but I'm.
See, it was beneficial.
You need to drive over to the big blue car.
Anybody else from public, anybody else got anything? How's the cookies, Kevin? My wife, man, we seen you, we hauled that you do, he's coming by, I told you, tried to get you to come over, trip test one out there, but you just walked right on by, so. Nupal, you got anything?
Are you sure? You don't want to have a seat on it?
I mean, Jack got himself a brownie and then brought me one, and I'm pretty sure that's a bribe, so I just want everybody to know.
We do what we can, nobody else, hell's, anybody else got anything?
I'm not gonna go for it. When I call, I can investigate it and make sure.
He told us. Meeting adjourned. Wait a minute, what?
The manila poker.
He hauled it.
He's saving, making sure landfill, we use bond that requires to carry every year, it's in that area.
This one?
Yes.
No, Sheila says no.
I'm sure you have stopped, and I give you an idea.
All right, go back. Meeting's going on. What's this, Sheila, can you explain?
This is the paperwork that is required to be carried for the bond for the land, county landfill. It's, we do, we have to sign it every year, same amount, nothing's gone up, never had to use it, thankfully.
Okay.
It is required.
So which?
Those tabs, keep it signed.
Okay, I apologize for being ignorant or something, which landfill?
The county landfill out on Barley Road.
Okay, this is the bond for, okay, okay. I made a motion that we signed, the bond form for the county landfill out on Barley Road.
Take a look, Sam. Sheila, it's the same thing every year, Greg.
Yeah, I recommend the other, the other part of it. How's banking business?
I'll second this.
Fine.
Good. All in fair, two all. Okay, is there anything else, Jim? You gonna haul that me in? No, I'm just kidding. Anybody else got anything? Oh, bad. Yes, Gary.
I've had some people inquire about that festival this weekend.
Okay.
Is, was that supposed to go through the BCA or?
No, we're, it's not, it's, it's all been approved, there's, we went through it, the county attorney worked on it for a week or longer. I've talked to Norm about this, I've talked to Heather about this, I've talked to the people, the owners about it, talked to some neighbors about it. Here's the, and Norm, what is gonna test to this part. Once again, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus. There's rights and wrongs on both sides of the table that didn't get handled properly, okay? That's just all there is to it. If we condemned or put off everything that didn't get to follow up, follow through, nothing would get done, okay? So the county attorney spent all week dealing with the homeowners, putting in certain stipulations for them, they agreed to the stipulations, he made sure that it, they was met. I did talk to her, and I believe Heather's, she's been told that she has to come to the next planning and zoning to absolutely know for certain everything that has to be done in its entirety. Now, I didn't give her the excuse for ignorance of the law is no excuse in the state of Indiana. You know, pull somebody over, speeding while you're doing, speeding, you know you're not supposed to know, didn't know, oh, you're stupid. But on the flip side of the coin, when I looked at some other things, and the county attorney's been involved, there were some other things that probably wasn't done according countywide, okay? The attorney's made an excellent point, I believe he talked to me about this yesterday or day before. Some of the, not some, a lot of the ordinances that the county has in place for certain things ain't worth a pot to pee in. Is that correct, sir? Or they need to be reworked?
There are a couple of things that I uncovered in reviewing this particular issue that I think needs some revision. The ordinance dealing with these special events, like larger festivals, that ordinance needs to be reworked, because right now, it, it doesn't do what you guys need it to do.
So, and I have nothing against people having events, you know, I think it's wonderful for the county, but once again, like I was telling people from Altamont, the reason I'm doing it here is because I can't see because of the box, is, and the reason that we have the county attorney is to make sure our ordinances are in line with the needs of Oland County, with Oland County, not in the needs of Monroe County or anybody else's county, the needs of Oland County. And Norman says it very well, the follow-up on some things on both sides of the fence, some of the things weren't done properly. So, yes.
Just to tag on to that, and Beth knows firsthand, we have to use what we're given as the tool, so like when you say the ordinance aren't written well, or don't cover enough ground, you're absolutely right. Unfortunately, we have to make decisions based on what we have in front of us, and that's our guidelines to work off of.
Yes.
Now, in this case, it never got to us, we never saw it, whatever the reason was, don't know, doesn't matter at this point. We, our hands are tied a lot of times by what is written or what hasn't been updated in a lot, and it's as simple as that. You know, we have to, if it says we've got a Model T that we're gonna drive to town, we drive a Model T to town.
But it's got stipulations on it.
We can, and we do, we, we, we try to, we hold our narrative, we try to dial it in as much as we can, but with that being said, the ordinance carries the day, we can't go with it.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
We, we can, we can tighten it down as much as we can, but it does need to be rewritten and tightened up on several different things, not just festivals, there's many pieces that we need to look at.
And it's, it's, it's unfortunate, was you gonna say? It's unfortunate, and we've dealt with these ordinances situations for years, that they're just loosely written at best, some of them, and some of them are not properly written. And whether it's fortunate or unfortunate for us, we got a good county attorney that's going to look in and take care of that, but we have a multitude of ordinances that are out of place. You know, it's just like the event at Tier Ten, you know, I heard you had, I guess things went pretty well, Simon.
I know, so I didn't, I wasn't able to.
But I've heard, I've heard they didn't do this, 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 but I heard they did this, 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 this. Okay, so the people are saying this, 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 you need to get where the people are saying this, this, and this, and what that reflects to is the county officials. All of us, Norm, Heather, council, commissioners, auditor, attorney.
The thing is though, where, where do you start? You've got your planning commission, you got your BCA, but if the ordinances aren't any good, they're not enforceable or whatever, then why even have those entities? I mean, that's.
I, I understand, but once again, we, we're going back beating a dead horse.
Exactly.
And.
But what's to move forward, and how are we gonna do that if we don't have the right tools?
He just said what he's gonna do, we just said what he was going to do.
How long will it take for that ban to one of the variants? I mean, is that gonna be something to affect that? And I'm not being argumentative.
No, I, I totally understand, I mean, the variance doesn't, I mean, that has to go through the planning commission.
The BCA.
BCA, see, there's so many, it's gotta go through the BCA, and, you know, and I agree with you, but I would think what would be a good thing for us to do is the BCA, the planning commission, the commissioners, everybody get together and talk about these things that need fixed, because emails and texts don't get it done, because there's no follow-up with them. You get everybody in the same room at the same table talking about things, I think we could come up with some good answers. What'd you, what'd you say today?
Uh, we, we hold on to work together, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That everything is easier if we can be a team, if we can mix up together and work together to get what needs done, done, is a rule.
And we need, we need to have those meetings, it's gonna, it's going to have to happen because if not, we're not gonna improve. We can, we'll be saying this six months from now, won't we?
Well, you could meeting yourself to death too, you know, that, that's the thing that I don't want, just, okay, let's have a meeting, and let's talk about this, no, no, let's have some action, that's what we need to plan to do.
Well, if there's no follow-up, don't have the meeting. I can't make, I can't make people follow up stuff that.
Why not? You're the commissioner, you should be willing to do that.
I'm gonna leave that alone because that's not right. I'm done. Yes.
Sorry.
I have a lot at stake in this particular issue that's being discussed, but I also have been around the county, I've been planning and zoning director, and in the health department, rebuilding and planning and zoning, there is so much that needs fixed, the support needs to go to getting things fixed, this ballot, just because I sit here doesn't mean I agree with everything they do, but I do support them, and I'll be the first one saying, you know, I can, I can picture the ordinances, I've seen them, I know what is working and not, and it is the working together and the following up and communications and creating checklist and making things done, again, I, I will support that part of it in getting things done, but it does need to happen sooner than later because there's just that many more people that are going to get to do or not get to do what they want, and I know Tony is busy, he can sell company, no, he usually to are, and again, help our team, as I understand it, Heather is new, she's a woman, the job and ordinances, and, and just wanna make sure that things move and progress, you know, followed up with and done the way that they're supposed to, and the people that apply for these know what they're being told they need to do, and, and that's part of the follow-up as well.
I agree. You know, it's a work in progress, and sometimes I wonder, you know, are we gaining any ground? Are we making, are we making headway? I think we are, I do. So I think we just, we take it one day at a time, because you, you can't take it two days at a time, take it one day at a time, keep working, keep moving forward, but like Heather said, we gotta continue to work together and come together as a team, and I think we're gonna succeed. Anybody else have anything? Meeting's adjourned.